...for public comment if you would come to the podium. And if you would give your name, if you would like to address the board.
Hello, my name is Eric Reynolds. I don't know how many of the board members had the opportunity to do the Facebook post by the mayor. I feel that that was very unprofessional. Posting the video was one thing, but the accusations and further comments that he made are unprofessional and just unwarranted. Based on all the controversy that's gone on here at the boardroom and in the office, it might be a good idea for the mayor to attend a diversity training or sensitivity training course to try and get along with the people, both in the office and in the community. Something that I think the board might want to think about. Other than that, that's all I have. Thank you.
And I will close for your public portion of this meeting at this time. Everybody had a chance to look over the board workshop minutes. If there are no additions or changes, I have a motion to accept the minutes that's written.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor? Aye. Looking at the board meeting of September 8th and looking at those minutes, is there anything there that one sees that would be wanted corrected or changed? Have a chance to look it over? Make that motion to accept? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution to approve claims and warrants. Is that on the list? Do you have a chance to look them over?
Jake, a quick question. DJM equipment, $171 for a bunch of filters?
Yeah, for the back, for the bobcat and versa handler.
I mean, do we, I see BART did some work and I'm just wanting, wondering, can't we keep it local or can't BART do that or you have to go to those guys for those nice special filters?
Well, DJM, yeah, for the bobcat, we try to keep those bobcat specific filters and oils and stuff like that in those. And then some of the local things when we need inspections, a lot of times they'll go up to, up to BART's or a local garage.
There, I see that there are two entries for the storage tank pollution liability. I believe that's correct. One of them coming under sewer and one of them under general. Is the reason for two of them, why they are separate or is one four down at the sewer testing facility?
No, the insurance is paid partially by the general fund and the other part is paid by sewer fund. That's why there's two entries. And that's the same for all the invoices that are split between the two, like postage or the copier, everything's 90/10.
Thank you. Everybody knows that. And can I have a motion to approve the claim due warrants?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Buckain?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Trustee Byers?
Aye.
Next, we have authorization for Mayor Cahill to sign a shared services agreement between the Village of Webster and Noco, Norwood, and Golden Boys. Jake, you might be, I can read this through, but you might be able to explain this a little bit more. Looks like there will be four involved in your building out here, is that correct?
Yes. The storage area? Yes, current of the Noco and the rehab that's going on over at Noco, we were looking, I think, the original agreement that we had was some about six years ago that we tried, looking at putting all the dumpsters in the one enclosure and trying to all work together and consolidate things back there. It started the rehab with Noco, they had a limited area for their dumpsters and so we thought it would work out better and we operated again at this time and they, and they thought it was a decent idea. So, we're looking at putting them basically where they were before and straighten that drive plane, put up behind our paint job up against the building there. Noco's going to construct an enclosure there and have dumpsters in there and we're going to split it out and the split is in there. Basically, Noco's staying a third, Golden Boys is staying a third in the village and Norwood staying a third together. And then if the charge were one, we're all splitting a quarter of it. And it'll keep everything in one nice enclosure and right now we've got two eight yards, an eight yard current board and eight yard regular. And we have a service schedule in there. I think it's going to work out pretty good. Obviously, we'll have to see if we have to tweak it at all once we experience, you know, true volumes and that based on whatever we pay out individually, that should work out pretty good.
And then I'm looking at the invoicing, number five, and you just got to determine whether it's going to be monthly or quarterly.
Yeah, yeah, we tried, and that's one thing we have, I sent to Noco a while ago to review and that's one thing we still have to finalize whether or not we're looking to do it monthly or quarterly. Honestly, I think the quarterly is probably easier in here, but I'm not certain how, you know, Chris and I would like to do it, like, whatever, whatever works out better, you know, comes out the same, I guess.
And just to reiterate, it would be a shared mutual cost. The village would pay for the garbage dumpster, about 16.7% of the cost and the cardboard 25%. And all four entities would pay 25%. The Noco would be 33%, along with Golden Boys, 33% of the garbage dumpster, and then Norwood 16 and the village 16. Probably the Noco and Golden Boys will generate a little bit more in terms of what can be put out there.
Yep.
Is there a date that you want this shared service agreement made, a particular day on here?
I think some, it depends on their, you know, their opening day, they're aiming towards the beginning of October, so it's when we can get the service set up. Right now, they're temporarily at the back of the parking area there.
So, we'll just give authorization for the mayor to sign it and then the date is established and...
Are you talking about the date at the very top, at the very beginning?
Yeah.
That's the date. Well, that'd be the date of whoever signs it last.
Okay.
It's not effective until everybody signs it, right? And I don't think anybody's signed it yet, right? So...
So, it's just authorization for the mayor?
Right, but don't, don't, don't set a date by which anybody's, you confuse me what you said with the date there. Just authorize the mayor to sign it and whatever, whoever signs it last, that's the date that'll get put at the top.
Okay. Are they going to roll for that?
We don't know what that date's going to be.
What's that? They're going to roll for that, say who signs it last?
We always sign last and it has to be...
All right, I'll, I'll take a motion for the mayor to sign the shared services agreement between Noco, Norwood, and Golden Boys.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Trustee Buckain?
Aye.
Trustee Byers?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Next, we have a motion for authorization for Mayor Cahill to sign a maintenance agreement for stormwater management facilities with Village Path Townhouses or Townhomes LLC, section 1, 2, 3, and 4.
Will can explain that.
I can't, I was just waiting my cue. This is another part of my job that I do, which is monitoring and making sure that the stormwater facilities that are currently in place are maintained and taken care of. And what these agreements do is every time there's a new stormwater facility, the village historically does not accept stormwater facilities. I think after, the first one we, we accepted was Hartland Estates and I think that one gave us a bad taste in our mouth. So, from now on, what we do is we have an agreement made with the owners of the stormwater facility and ourselves, and that allows us to inspect the facility every year and make sure it's maintained. And if it is not maintained, we send them a letter and tell them you need to maintain it, or I send them a letter every year anyways to tell them it's time to inspect it and give us a report back. And if they don't maintain it, what the agreement does, it allows us access and ease them to enter the property and maintain it if necessary and then charge them for overtime. So, that's basically, and we have agreements for all the towns, so far the newer towns that have gone out there, North Town Apartments, they have like Saturday apartments that we have agreements with. This particular development, the original town that went in, we have an agreement with, and so this is another one that's like phase two of this project. They put in a new town and so we need a new agreement. That's what these are for.
I remember going and doing, I think, a Saturday report, we were looking at the on there.
Yeah. Yeah, and they had a main table.
So, I'd like a resolution for authorization for Mayor Cahill to sign a maintenance agreement for stormwater management facilities with Village Path Townhouses and Townhomes LLC.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Trustee Buckain?
Aye.
Trustee Byers?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Motion passes.
We got an on two. Resolution to remove a pool and pool deck located at 41 Meadow Drive, cat ID 080.18-2-12 and according to Village Code, section 3021, K, emergency action. Leave in, looking at this document that's before me, there was notifications, violation of Webster code, specific violation of exterior structure, pool not maintained, cover missing, no record running to filter, no cover, pool deck in dilapidated condition, observed on July 14th. Following corrective measures should be taken no later than July 21st, remove pool and deck. This violation shall be completed by July 21st, 2016, penalty to be assessed. Apparently that obviously has not been done. So, Jake, or Will, you want to talk? Can you move in there?
Yeah. I don't know if you're aware of this particular house, it's in the midst of foreclosure, it's been in the midst of foreclosure for about three, maybe four years, two or five years has it been? Okay, but I've become aware of this house in the past three years and everybody has asked Wells Fargo to do something there, the company, the bank that owns or is in the midst of the foreclosure, I shouldn't say, they're paying the tax on the property. And so, when I have a code violation, I send them a notice as well as the owner of the property. And their property maintenance company that they use usually comes over and takes care of it. And in the past, they've taken care of the pool by putting a new pool cover on, locking the gate that goes to the pool, which is, it's like a freestanding deck with a lock on the, like a little gate that's there. But the problem we have is the cover never lasts, so right now the cover's inside the pool according to the pictures you can see there. I've gotten several phone calls from neighbors, specifically the neighbor that's behind, when the kids are crawling around on the deck and walking along the edge of the, the pool rail there and, because it's an attractive nuisance and they're after the tadpoles and the tadpoles are after the mosquitoes and 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 and. So, in contacting the bank and the owner, of course, the owner, I never get a response back from the owner, but I wrote a letter to the bank, I wrote a letter to the property maintenance company, and the bank, when I finally got a hold of them, they said because they do not own the property, the most they can do is either put a cover on or drain the pool. But if you drain the pool, the problem is you affect the integrity of the pool because the water is part of the structural integrity of the pool. And that'll happen, not all the water comes out and now the tarp and everything are, and the cover is sucked down and some of the sides are starting to bend in a little bit on the pool. And so, I asked if they could remove the pool and they said they can. So, I thought it would best, be best for us to remove the pool ourselves. And I know that we'll, we'll use the law, you can say, well, parents should watch their own kids. That is true, they should. However, the reason we have laws on the books is because of catastrophe. Even those big blue blobs that we call, that are pools, inflatable pools, anything over 24 inches requires a barrier, a fence and everything around it. Why does it require a fence? Is kid drowned in the pool? So, we put this law on our books for specific situations like this one. And unfortunately, yeah, okay, we have to go in and remove the pool, but again, the money will be recouped from a tax return on the property when the property's up.
Who owns it then? The bank doesn't own it?
A gentleman by the name of David Bell.
Oh, so he still does, so...
Is the house occupied? No.
Asking them.
Where does Mr. Bell live? I have no idea. I said, I heard in South Carolina...
You said you were sending notices to the owner.
I sent to the last known address that I knew he lived in.
Which is this 41 Meadow Drive.
That's correct.
Does the post office return the mail? It's unbelievable.
Yeah, it does.
So, he's not getting any notice?
Certainly.
But I posted on the house and the bank does, sent notice to the bank, so...
So, who, who, who do you envision actually going onto this property and removing the pool and pool deck?
No, you're right.
You're going to have to drive equipment back there?
Yep, because the pool's not going to levitate itself off to the street.
Well, okay. So, in the event there's any damage to the landscaping, the yard or are you going to restore the place back to, at least that part, back to where you found it?
We're going to do the best we can to make sure that we are encroaching as little as possible upon the yard, any landscaping and so on.
You kind of really don't have to bring equipment back there. You can take the bloody carrier.
Right, and what we've done in the past, with any kind of equipment that we have, gone in the backyard with, we've probably made plywood and drive on that.
Yeah, I was thinking of that. Some lights and stuff, once it's taken up, car ends.
You're not taking the deck down, is that correct?
I don't think so.
You just cut that one off, you just leave whatever's in the ground in the ground and just cart the wood out.
Yeah, we're, we're debating back and forth on whether the deck needs to come down or not. If the deck stays, what we end up doing is putting a rail where the pool was.
I'm not taking the deck down, I plan on bringing the backhoe down there because I want to waste as little time on this effort as possible, so, so we drive backhoe back there, grab a, put down and rig the pool up and, you know, there's no water and now we pull it up nice, throw it back and drop it and be out of there pretty quickly. And, but Will said, here that...
We're going to put, bring a backhoe into the backyard.
Yes.
You really think that's necessary?
Yeah, because, you know, normally, all the experience I've had with pools, especially ones that sit there, nobody around it for a long time, is that somewhere along that pool, there's going to be a big hornets nest or something else. And I'm sure there's a guy in the backhoe that they can stir him up when they're inside something closed and out there grabbing hold of that when they, when they come out, let loose on them, so. It's a, it's a relatively high backyard, pretty dry with that area, so we can bring it down pretty quick and it's about a foot, 24 foot pool and 22, not a humongous pool, so.
So, we have like a cost of how much it's going to take, cost to us with equipment renting versus just hiring someone to come to it, so then you don't have to worry about all that stuff?
No, I have not, I have not, I just found out about that earlier this week and then last week and the special ones to try to get it down, which the business approved or voted on positively, I guess, to try to get it down as...
Yeah, I don't think it's a bad idea if Don thinks legally that everything's kosher and it's doing that. Well, well, if you as the village board have to make a determination, you can't just take a resolution authorizing them to do this. You have to make a finding that there's a clear and imminent danger to the life, safety, or health of persons. Yeah, that's, that's clear to have a pool that someone can drown in, that isn't the best, or is it good to say? How much, how much water is in the pool? Like, what's the depth of the water?
Probably a hundred gallons, I gather, about, about a foot in the middle of it.
Is that groundwater that has collected in there, or rainwater basically?
There's a foot of water in the middle of it?
Yeah, it's, it's kind of cone shaped in the center, you're probably put it the deepest spot.
I don't know the picture that you...
You can't tell how much water is in there in those pictures? So, so you have to decide if there's a clear and imminent danger to life, safety, or health. Not just that it's aesthetically not pleasing to the neighbors to look in.
And I think so, if there's children in the neighborhood.
Well, at that time, that's, I'm assuming, you have to make that part of your motion and you have to, you have to say, oh, yeah.
And then I just think whatever, you, you need to restore the property to how you found it.
What if the liner was removed? If the liner was removed, then water would not sit in it, is that correct? And if the liner is, then the structure itself can remain because that is not, doesn't look like it's falling in.
It is falling in.
It is collapsing inward?
It will, it will eventually, it's a large part of the support system.
Because I don't, all I see are freestanding supports, so it looks like it's easy to remove. It's not like my rule where I have all these things going out into the ground.
I'd say, take it down. On the advice of my DPW commissioner, the way you have to do is take it down.
Oh, no, it's an advice of Will, I'm against it. I'll do it if I'm told. It's always...
You just said you support Jake and his suggestions. Not what you got to say.
For you.
No, I think it, I think it should come down too.
Do you know how many children are in houses around that?
Yeah.
It looks like it's open to residents behind them, the side, the only attention is on the gap and not on the pool itself.
Even though the gate is locked and everything, how the, the banks are just operating over.
I, I wouldn't argue, I guess, that the health risk from the mosquitoes and all that other stuff is probably a better one. Because if there's a pool right next door to this that was in fine shape, that was coronated and everybody was using it, it would pose the exact, exact same risk to somebody who wasn't, who's a child that wasn't getting much better friends as this pool does. So, to say that a kid could run, fall in it, jump and drown in it, they probably have about a 10% chance of this one because it's got, you know, 10% of the water is one that's, that's open and active and working well. So, I, I think the health risk probably is a better argument to me and I'll be more agreeable, I guess, that way, just, that's my own personal opinion, but there's no difference in pools sitting here than one that's, you know, full of water that...
Yeah.
This one's probably more safe because there's not as much water and it'd be harder to drown it.
But it is a size pool.
No electric to it, so they're not going to get shot.
And pool salivates are required to have a way of motion sensitive, so they would have alarm go off if a child is tolerant of water.
Has the village ever done anything like this before?
Nope.
Not that I'm aware of, not by 15, 16 years.
I don't know, you're aware of the president, you're, you're actually probably doing the property owner a favor by, you know, taking this thing down for him.
Who else is there ever going to give, you know, reimburse the cost of?
What's it going to cost, take it down roughly?
We'll end up having a few guys over there, roughly a couple hours altogether by the time we, you know, we go in. We've got some plywood here, I'm not going to go buy any more plywood to, to have something to drive on, frankly, if it's driving out, I'll probably drive back there. I think everybody just, I'm honestly about sick of this house, it's been, it's just, it's, it's mind boggling what the banks let happen to these houses. This was, I think, a real decent house when someone left it and it's just, I, I sent a nice long letter to the CEO of Wells Fargo and told them this property preservation department is a joke and that's exactly not what they do. They took a house, it's probably a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand dollar house and made it worth maybe a quarter of that, or maybe whatever the lots were. Because they have pipes freezing, or whoever's making the decisions in Arizona thinks that doesn't understand anything about groundwater freezing, any of that stuff. The basement's filled up with water, a few times they decided to send some nubblad over it, when it's 90 degrees outside, to pump it out onto the driveway that runs into the street. That's a reference.
Yeah, yeah, and it's, yeah, it's just, it's a, it's a disgusting example of the way that, you know, banks that are so far removed from us do anything. And it's, it has literally been at least four and a half, five years that this place has been empty and just continuing to, to go down. I think they did put a roof on it just that, I really don't know why. There's already bunkers, they're simply putting laces on a bowling ball because it's not like humans, but that's what they did, if anything. I think they could have started maybe putting the electric back in there, this is some pump saved working and a lot of other things, but it's, it's frustrating to see, to see something that is nice just don't, you know, deteriorate so bad, so.
What did you say, a couple hundred bucks?
Oh, that was, that was kind of a long way around.
Thanks, yeah.
More, I mean, yeah, probably more, because I'm, you know, it's whatever our drop, our drop time is, our fuel time is, our wages, you know, and wages and benefits, it's a full rate, so I'd say a few hundred bucks by the time we get all said and done, it's like that. No, but with all the, you know, you figure their freight and benefits and that when you're, when you're paying out, so, it's, and then that will get passed, state, they get billed, and that, I'm sure it's not going to get paid, that'll be passed taxes and, and I'm sure the village will remain allish and that, so.
Can I ask a question, please? Do you, do you know of any other municipality that has done this?
I've known, I know of municipalities that have demolished homes, but not this particular specific situation, no.
I agree, I see the board right now as a health issue, which I see in the code as opposed to necessarily safety of the resident because it's been watered really, unless somebody were to cut themselves or rush to try and climb into the middle, then they have, and again, that's health, I'd say, to a teenager.
Can I make a quick suggestion? If you were to just cut a hole in the liner in the center, pull that out, let the water drain, that would be quick and easy.
That's my suggestion in terms of the liner, allowing that water, then not collecting it, then just to, that's why I asked the question, is it floating on itself and falling in? that's why I asked the question, is it floating on itself, is it falling in, or structurally, will it stay, you know, stay up?
No, it's starting, it's starting to crank in a little bit on the, on the sides, and I think with, with no water in there, help being tied together across, it's just gonna eventually collapse and, and so you have a windstorm, then you got a huge sheet of aluminum flying around, I think it's, I think it's gonna be incumbent upon us to, would you anything, just get rid of it?
My, my question is, my problem with this is, we, um, putting a lien on it, will we ever recruit the money for it? I doubt we have with, or ever will with the cutting that we did, the back and puncture of the place, you know?
Well, we would have.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was a different situation, yeah. But this, we would have to wait for the house to go up to auction after it's foreclosed on, and whoever buys it would have to make up for all of the taxes.
So eventually it would come up.
That's what he said. Oh, well, the county would make us whole.
So, can I have a motion to allow the, approve the village of us to remove the pool in exactly located forty-one Meadow Drive?
I'll make that one.
One second. I, I think you have to make a determination first that it's a health hazard or something else, and then, or as part of the motion, you have to determine that, you know, you found that.
Based on, based on, um,
Safety and health risks?
Based on the pictures presented to us, uh, of the condition of the pool, the fact that water is standing in it, served as a place for breeding of mosquitoes, et cetera. And may pose a, I think you have, have a true, the.
I think this part of, just a student, as part of Will's page, he gave you a copy of chapter, is there any of chapter thirty? Well, pull out section K, it's on the five oh five of Will's handout. And you see, you see at the beginning, the village board determines there, not that there may be a danger, but there has to be, there is a clear and imminent danger, that's what you have to find. Not that there may be a danger, but there is a clear and imminent danger to the life, safety, or health of persons. So that's the language you need to put in your motion.
I don't think so.
You see that?
No.
I see it, but I, I can't agree to that, because I have not been told that there are any children in the area.
Well, if you can't agree to it, then you can't authorize them to take it down.
I would be, if we're gonna use that, you would have to tell them about the deck and not the pool. So the kids are on the deck and the things have broken down.
This is your statutory legislative authority for going onto somebody else's private property and removing their property. Unless there is a, unless there is a clear and imminent danger to life, safety, or health, you have no right to go onto this person's property and take anything.
Hey, Don, you phrase it like that.
Well, I didn't phrase it, that's what this, your statement says. It's not me, this is the United States of America, you know, there is due process, and you can't just say a government go onto people's property and start yanking stuff away.
Um, then I think that what we should first determine is then, is this, uh, does this board determine that there is a clear, is a clear and imminent danger to the life, safety, or health of persons or properties? Unless it's immediately secured, and, um.
So, so you can make that in the form of a motion, take a vote on that, and if you get three of you to say, three of you to say yes, then you can make the approval.
I have a motion, uh, that this board determines that there is a clear and imminent danger to the life, safety, and health of persons or properties as a result of this, uh, the deterioration of this pool.
I'll make that one.
Well, there is no second of the motion, guys.
I'd be more concerned with the deck than the pool.
Well, same here, I don't disagree, but I, that's like all of it.
I haven't been there to look at it. I would go and look at it, if we wanted to table this, which you can bring up again anyways.
By this code, reading this code, it is not some severe danger any different than what Jake said about the, you know, three pools on the street, or anything, I don't, it's empty.
It, it is a cesspool, and the size you're coming in, it's not in great shape. I feel that, and it should be taken down, right like he said.
The alternative, the alternative is, you can, you, Will, can follow the, the same process that you did for one oh four East Main Street, which, you know, you gotta put the property owner, he does his investigation report, you put him on notice, you have a little hearing, and then he has an oppor, the owner has an opportunity to show up if he wants to, and, uh, then you can determine, you know. That's why this one, this emergency action, it's gotta clearly be an emergency, that's why there's gotta be this clear and imminent danger. So if it's not an emergency, you gotta do the regular unsafe building and structure, I assume the deck and pool qualifies as a structure. So do your, do a, do your, uh, little investigation and report, and then, uh.
I do my little investigation.
We just went through it with one oh four East? I think if you do it that, if we do it, if you do it that way, and the guy's put on notice, it's a lesser burden. You don't have to find it imminent danger, you just gotta find that it's an unsafe structure.
Right.
If the mail is coming back, then you obviously didn't put a change of address in on most of those. Will the bank tell you here, give you an address? Wells Fargo? Well, because we gotta try to get the guy personally served with, with the notice like we did on, you know. But we're, you don't have to drive to South Carolina, if he's, we gotta find an address for him. And we can always get a sheriff or somewhere, we can just get the sheriff. How long, how long's that place been open?
About five years.
Is it valuable, do you give years to live? The neighbors know where you want to?
Uh, Will? Can I walk under that, or do I need to go with you? Uh, and you go under the property number. If I, if I were someone else, I'd go.
I, I go, I go under the, uh, where the code says I have to take, make sure that the place is secure. So I check the locks, I'm thinking just to, to that, so I have the authority in that sense. But to enter the property without the right authority would be considered trespassing, as far as I understand, and am I correct in that assumption there?
Yeah, if someone doesn't have a legal right to be on the property, it's trespassing.
So when you go check the locks, can you let me know?
Sure.
When I go with you?
Absolutely.
To help you. I don't wish to.
No, you might be able to see it from the backyard of the lady, who would be tied up to let you watch the property.
Alright, um, well, why don't we just, why don't we pursue that and forget? And I'd like to go with you, because maybe it'll be brought up again, and taken a look at it, and, uh, but I don't think any of us have really been there, we didn't see a picture.
Point of order, we did make a motion, and get partway through the vote, would the person that made the motion like to withdraw that motion?
Well, it never got seconded.
There was no second.
There was no second.
There was no motion on stage.
Okay, alright, I thought I heard a second, I'm sorry.
Well, then we'll move to, thank you. We'll move to attorney, do you have anything for us? Um, now I've done that. Are you gonna be able to get in touch with anybody, can I see your email?
No, cause I don't know who, I, I didn't.
That didn't help today, the email, the name didn't help today?
Pardon me?
The name or email didn't help today?
Our, uh, our internet's been down all day, so I didn't get any email till nine o'clock this morning.
Uh, financial statements? Comment on, on these?
Think you might like to note in the sewer fund, we took in more than spent. I'm saying this was a general fund, but of course, we're just coming out the tax season.
Okay. Any comments on any of that? Uh, Will?
I'll have a little report. Well, if I stop over, so we can, this is more positive thing. I'll just highlight a couple of them, because it's all the, the run of the mill stuff, so. Jim Kirk, one thirty-seven Donovan Street, got a fence permit, and I met the guy that's gonna be putting in the fence, so yay. Uh, we're willing, we won't have to go to court, and it's actually been changed from the eleventh through the twenty-eighth of October. So, uh, we're crossing our fingers that, uh, I don't have to go to court for that. I received plans for the North Avenue apartment project, so I'll be busy doing that, and I might have to ask for more time so that I could, uh, review them properly. Another one in thirty hours, so I might have to petition for it for that, or somebody put that.
I saw a lot of wooden stakes in the ground down there.
Yeah, I think they killed about five or six trees, if you see, they landed them right on, but. Uh, sixty-five Turbin Avenue, that's gonna be going up for auction in October, that house had caught fire about three, two, three years ago. So, that'll be good, because that'll be another one off of the books. We are working on, uh, free quotes for a new AC unit in the front office, part of the problem we're having is it's very humid in there. Front, I know here too, but this is, this one was by the different, so. I've got two quotes back so far, and they range anywhere from seventeen thousand to eleven, or twelve thousand, I'm waiting for a third one, so we'll see how that works. Uh, but what'll be nice is, not only hopefully will it alleviate a lot of the humidity, which is good for the equipment, or the paper for that matter, but also, uh, and for the employees, who I never really hinted it. But also we'll have a more fuel efficient furnace, so hopefully we'll save on our fuel bill as well. Fifty-six Mulholland Street, which, uh, was destroyed by fire in April, is now raised. In other words, our AZD has gone, uh, does both the foundations, so we'll be seeing a new structure being built there soon, so the residents are happy about that. And that's pretty much the gist of it.
Thanks, Will.
Department of Public Works, Jake?
Yes, the only thing I've got is the, I have to apologize, I've been doing none of the work this week, it's a family thing, so. Um, I do have, yesterday we got, uh, received from First Nagger the lease paperwork for the new backhoe. The new backhoe was received a week and a half ago. Um, so we just have those lease documents, I'm just trying to check, my recollection is that it was passed at a board meeting, President of the Mayor signed all the documents, all the lease documents. Uh, the failing that I would like to, I guess, just to make sure that we can, uh, per se, reform the sign, pending Don's approval of, of the lease. Um, those documents that were signed, I forwarded to everybody last night, I think they came ready. And it was last night that I forwarded them on to everybody, but pending Don's approval, if we did, uh, per se, reform the sign, in case my recollection is incorrect. So I think they might get paid for it, since they gave it to us.
Jake, Chris, again.
I think we also need authorization to make that first payment, because it won't be during the building, so we need to request that authorization also, because that first payment must be made by next week.
Separate than the, okay.
This, this says September twenty-eighth, so that's next week.
And that's cause I think that, uh, budgeted amount, though, that's, it could still be an extra, different payment, so.
Uh, payments are gonna be, what's gonna be, originally we discussed a five-year lease, uh, because of the trade-in value, and what we were able to put down on it, it's down to a three-year lease, it's on nineteen thousand thirty, nineteen thousand sixty-nine dollars, and eighteen thousand sixty-nine dollars, and eighteen thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, for, we owe fifty-five thousand seven oh three on the backhoe, and altogether we will be paying, let's say about fifteen hundred dollars in interest in three years. Isn't too terrible on, uh, third grand total of fifty-seven thousand. You know, we put twenty now, and we got twenty-five for the trade-in, so. And if you recall, this is what we're gonna, you know, try to do that maintenance plan, where every year, uh, we have no maintenance costs, and basically turn it into the hours that we have, and then any cost upgrades between the monoliths, so, and we just maintain the same lease. So yeah, so we got the authorization for.
To make a payment of nineteen thousand sixty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents next Thursday, which will be the first payment on lease.
Okay.
Nineteen thousand?
Sixty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents.
Where's that money coming from?
Reserves, fixed keeping, deposit line, yeah.
So it's in the regular budget, it's not out of reserve account?
Oh, no, no, sir, cause it's a lease, it can't come out of reserves. Right? It was budgeted oh one, oh five, five one one to two hundred.
So I undertake a motion to pay nineteen thousand sixty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents on September twenty-eighth, first following a first payment for the, uh, lease of the, uh, backhoe.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lansing?
Aye.
Trustee Belkane?
Aye.
Trustee Ryder?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And could we also, you know, authorization for the mayor to sign them all, necessarily these documents, pending the attorney's approval? Just my recollection is that was done, I can't find it in the, I thought.
Just in case.
It, that's kind of a just in case.
Cause otherwise we'd have to call a special meeting.
We're authorizing the signature on the lease.
I know lease, yeah, and what First Nagger just sent to us, uh, they had to wait, they had to wait for the invoice to come from the, um, Milky Cat, or the, or the backhoe, so. And the original one that they sent was separate from, didn't include their down payment on it, so, and the credit that we get there.
So, and the credit that we get there.
Well, as for a motion to authorize the mayor to sign, we agreed on the backhoe.
Pending, stop, wait.
Pending, pending, we don't determine the review and approval of the lease. Moving forward, without necessarily going to the planning board at this particular point, although I'm sure that the diagrams and all the information that's been generated by Don, which all of you have seen, the leads come through the emails, will be passed on to them, sort of, for a while. One of the things now that is an issue we as a board did make... Now, with the move down, I think we need to have discussions with Christina and mine ourselves as well on how we're going to pay for this. We need to, we have not budgeted for any major construction this year, and so I think we need to very shortly, with Christina's your input and Don and a number of others, we need to consider our avenues of funding. The cost, as you all are aware, and you've seen contracts run down, and what he's put together is somewhere in the range, depending on time, fair wage and all that kind of thing, and all the variables that are in there, it's probably under a hundred and fifty thousand.
How much was that?
I thought it was a hundred, under a hundred and fifty thousand. Actually, his projection was somewhere in the range of like one twenty to somewhere in there. But when you start, when you start talking to me about prevailing wage and all that kind of stuff, it's scary. But, you know, I think that we need to consider, moving forward, trying to get this done, how we do that. So I will ask you to consider that, I'll ask for you to think about that and then we'll put that either on a workshop coming up, or maybe the next... We have not heard back from the county about things, but I know that there were a number of questions that Mr. Walter had asked, one of them being in terms of leases. We will have to review leases with the companies, but just in terms of what they have with us now, there are a couple of them that extend out for sixty months, five-year periods. One of them was just recently done in two thousand and fourteen, so it was built in two thousand and nineteen with an extension. So they're looking to stay here through two thousand, twenty, twenty-four, and I think that, you know, all of them are in a similar situation. One of the other things was the idea of cost of transferring, and I believe that Mr. Carpenter has been kind of, globally, at least he's been very positive about the fact that as these companies may want to put up and install new equipment and so on at more optimum levels than where they are now, they may be very minimal to making those transitions and moves on their own rather than coming to the village and asking the village to fund those moves. That's something that he's working on, he's working with the companies and having conversation with that. So just keep you apprised of that and keep you in the loop also as things come out. Anything else, you want those lines? Events coming up, I don't believe there's any major village event until October, is that correct? There's another wine walk and then there's...
Twenty-second is the wine walk and we've got Eighteenth Century Tea October eighth, the Herne...
October eighth?
Trigger Free Trail?
Trigger Free Trail will be, that's Saturday before. Alright. Next village board workshop is October fourth, and the next village board meeting is October thirteenth. There is no executive session tonight, so can I have a motion to close the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Belkane? Trustee Lansing?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Byer?
Aye.
Motion passes.